Join me in prayer, would you please? Father, as we bow before you, thank you for the beautiful day. Lord, we ask that you look over us by conducting the business. Ask that you take care of our youth. We're having so much problem all throughout the United States. Just don't find a soul but then throughout the United States. Always, we ask you to look over our military, over our police. Lot of stress here to our rights and keep closing again. Lord, we ask that you guide us, deliver us in His precious name. Join me, Father. Morning to everyone. And a invitation to come out and be with us on August 26th, regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Anyone has any business before the board today, we have the, there'll be no one on the agenda, but we do have public discussion. Be recognized and you will be heard. Thank you again for coming out. We sure had a hot weekend this past weekend, and maybe the weather'll give us a little relief here. All right, at this time, I'm going to go to the audience. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or any concerns with the consent agenda or the information packet? Anyone in the audience? All right, no one in the audience, we'll turn to the staff. Does any of the staff members have any questions concerning the consent or the information packet? All right, now we'll go up to the board. Does any board member have any questions concerning the consent or the information packet? Any board member? All right. Floor is open for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
The move, Mr. Chair.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Of a second by Commissioner Bryan. All right. Any further discussion on this? Point from the audience? Point from the audience? There's no opposition? Motion to accept the consent and information packet passes five. First order of business will be the public hearing on the five cent gas tax ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Page 148 of your packet, if you could refer to, actually, page 147 is the public notice. Page 148 is the first page of the proposed ordinance. Consistent with Florida statute, this has been advertised at least 10 days in advance of today's public hearing. And consistent with our discussions in the past two months, we indicated that we'd conduct two public hearings per your instructions, the first being today, the second being September 9th, your next regular meeting, first meeting of September. On page 148, you'll see the caption at the top of the ordinance. If I have your permission, I'll read it by its title, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance reads as follows. It's an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners for Gulf County, Florida pursuant to Florida statute 336 subsection 0251B for the imposition and levy of a five cents local option motor fuel tax per net gallon of motor fuel sold within Gulf County. It's providing for a short title Gulf County Additional Local Option Fuel Tax Ordinance. It's providing for the legislative findings, providing for the authority for the levy, providing for the collection and designation of the tax specifying the use of the proceeds of the additional tax for statutory transportation expenditures, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing that the ordinance shall take effect upon adoption at the effective date of levying imposition made effective date of the levying imposition for a period of five years, and providing for the inclusion in our code and the commencement of the collection of the additional tax here under shall be effective January 1st, 2015. Commissioners, as you read through the whereas clauses, it establishes the, how we got here today. And in your initial budget discussions and public meetings, you had voted preliminarily to move forward the advertisement of this ordinance. The ordinance is roughly two and a half pages long, and it speaks to the use of the tax, the effective date of the tax, the distribution of the tax, and then the five-year period in which it'll become effective as of January 1st. Mr. Chairman, I would ask you, if you can, to turn it over to public comment, to be followed by the Commission's comments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. At this time, we will go to public comment, five cent gas tax ordinance. Anyone in the public that would like to come forward, sir?
Tom Sims, 1730 County Road 36, Weewaw. This is the second time I've been up. This is a, this is a bad ordinance. You're putting undue hardship on the low income and the elderly with fixed income. In White City, the gas was 351. You add a nickel onto it. It's not so much as the nickel, it's the difference between what everyone else pays in Panama City and what the low-income people that can't go to Panama City have to pay. Sometimes it's 30 cents a gallon, and that's just too much. You haven't been that good about managing the money in Gulf County, and I don't, I don't think you're gonna manage the money this tax is going to bring in, and I think it needs to be, not to be passed.
Watch. Thank you. All right, just a moment. We're still open to the public. Young lady, come up, please.
Barbara Radcliffe, 210 South Palm Street. Good morning. I would like to add to what Tom said. Mr. Jaeger, you have always said you'd only be for a gas tax if it came off the ad valorem tax, but yet you've, you are planning to raise the milleage rate. So, you know, you're double-dipping, in my opinion, and it will put a hardship on the people who can least afford it, and the people who can't afford to go to Bay County are going to go to Bay County. So it's kind of a regressive tax. The higher you make the gas, the more people are gonna look for ways to buy cheaper gas. So you're not only going to put a bigger burden on the property owners, you're gonna raise the gas tax, and you always said you wouldn't do that. Thank you.
Chairman, may I respond since she directed me before?
Yes, she should've directed the chair, but that's all right.
Barbara, look, I understand, any new tax is controversial. But I've said from day one that what I'm in for is to find alternative sources of revenue to try to offset any increases that we had to do in our budget from state mandates and other things, other increases, to help the property taxpayer. I've been consistent with that. I'm consistent with this, this, when we talk about Bay County, let me, let me just, for the record, Bay County has the same gas tax as Gulf County does. The benefit that Bay County has is they're close to the gas. They're close to the distribution. So, plus, they have to compete. When you go to a smaller community, for example Franklin County, right down the road is 10 cents higher than we are. And so, the difference between Bay County and Gulf County has nothing to do with tax. But Gulf, Bay County is already addressing this issue. They haven't made up their minds yet, but they've already discussed this, this five cent in, in Bay County. So the tax has nothing to do with the price of gas in Gulf versus Bay. Now, if we increase it a nickel, it will have something to do. But what you have to do is take that money, which we have done in this budget, we've put 116,000 of the total amount that it'll, we put every dime that we could into public work so we wouldn't have to fund that with property tax money. I've been consistent with that. I've, I've spoken with Ms. Hardman, with the taxpayers, with Coastal Community Association. They understand that. They understand that we're trying to reduce. Let me just state for the record, and Tom, you, you said something that is not necessarily accurate. You said we weren't good with, with managing money. When I come back to this board six years ago, this board was levying in property tax money, not the total budget, in property tax money, 13.7 million. Two years ago, we had cut that to 7.6. The way we'd done that is cut out what we were spending, but we had also looked at alternative sources of revenue. Two of them, let me just mention right now. One of them was the half-cent sales tax that the school board had, had sunsetted out. We, we took that half cent and we put it to the landfill. We didn't generate a new tax. We took that tax, we put it to the landfill, so the property taxpayer wouldn't be paying that, that whole bill, there would be a sales tax there. The other way is, we were probably the only county in the state of Florida that didn't charge a landfill fee. We had people from Bay County, from Calhoun County, coming to our landfill, filling our landfill up. We started a landfill fee. It was an alternative source of revenue. It went, it goes directly to the landfill, cost and expenses, to reduce what we were charging the property taxpayer. So, just for the record, we, of course, now, we're, we're up higher than 7.6 at where we were two years ago because of mandates and that, and we'd hit the rock bottom, but we are still probably 25 to 30 percent what we, below what we were five, six years ago in what we were levying in our property tax. I will continue to state that the only way, the property tax, ad valorem tax to me is unfair. I'm against it. I wish we had a sales tax. I wish we had a national sales tax. But the way to offset that is alternative sources of revenue. This is a nickel per gallon. It's not 5 percent. It's a nickel per gallon. So it's, it's, I understand that it will hit some of the elderly and some of the, the other needy folks, but it's, it's a fair tax. It's a fair way to do it. We've already committed. It's in this budget this year that this money is gonna go to offset property. It's not a new tax. It's a tax to offset property tax. And that's my argument. I, I could say a lot more. That'll just be my argument for it. I know it's unpopular. Sometimes we have to make decisions up here that it's unpopular. But that's my argument. It's been my consistent argument ever since I've been up here, and I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner Jaeger, all right, anyone else on the board? Pat? And we'll go back. Mr. Sims already been once. We'll give him the second time. Come on up, Pat.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association President. I totally agree with Warren. There's gotta be some relief for the ad valorem taxpayer. We are taking it on the chin for all the tourists, all the people who pay no taxes in this county, and you're talking about five cents. Think about it in just number terms. If I did my numbers right, and I'm, I'm just waking up this morning, but I've got about 2,000 gallons of gas to spend $100. 2,000 gallons equals $100. Now, that's not much out of any single pocket, but when you have, like in July 4th, when the gas tanks were completely closed down out here because all the tourists had used it, let's let the tourists pay some of the cost. Let's let the people that don't pay any taxes at all in this county pay some of the cost of riding on the roads. My understanding with this is y'all can't go spend this on something else. It is mandated that it goes into the pot. And when that goes in the pot, that's less than we, ad valorem taxpayers, have to put in the pot. So it saves us tremendous money as an individual taxpayer. Not all taxpayers in this county are wealthy, y'all. There's a lot of taxpayers in this county that own fixed income, that are elderly. And why should we be carrying the taff for everybody else in the county? We gotta have some relief. You gotta find some alternatives other than just keep going up, up, up on ad valorem taxes. So I'm for this, as it is stated, as it's going to be used, to offset the ad valorem taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hardman. All right, Mr. Sims.
When I was talking about the management of the money, if you look at last year's budget and you look at this year's budget, in county travel, travel for the commissioners outside the county, it was $5,000. You've spent way more than that. You know, you've got money squirreled away in this budget that nobody knows about. The courthouse in Weewaw, the backend leaks where the old jail was. Washington County had to tear down their courthouse because it leaked and they did nothing about it. You've put nothing in the budget to fix the roof in the courthouse, but you rented the whole courthouse out for a dollar a year. You got, you got the workers that do all the work in Gulf County that didn't get a pay raise this year. Yet, you gave Don Butler a pay raise to $104,449. The average pay raise for administrator in 17 counties is $77,000. And he said himself that he was making 84, so he was making more than the average of the other counties, and that's what I'm saying, is you're not managing the money well.
Mr. Sims, let me correct you. This board did not give Mr. Butler a raise. This board set the salary, the county administrator. Mr. Butler's on his way out. The next administrator, they have stipulations, has to have a degree in management, has to have so many years of experience, and this is all we can give you. This is it. We, it's not negotiable. This is it. So as far as giving this gentleman over here, he probably deserves twice as what the workload he has to take and what he has to put up with. We set the salary of the administrator. He just happens to be at Nam, but he won't be sitting there just, just a short term.
Well, I don't know how you define raise, but if you're making $84,000 and now you're making over $104,000, that's a raise. And then to come, for you to come in and say, "Well, we have $104,000. This is all we're going to pay you." Why do you hire people at the top end of the scale? They should be coming in at a lower scale, and as they work and prove theirself, then they get a pay raise. You start at the top end, and you've spent all the money. No company hires at the top end. They always hire at some other level, and you work your way up, but not in Gulf County.
I don't think that's true. Absolutely not true. Anyone else from the audience on this five cent gas tax? Anyone else from the audience? Anyone? Right? Anyone from the, yeah? Commissioner?
I, I also have had many folks from the community reach out to me regarding this issue, and I think that the folks that we've heard from, from the audience, all make very good points. I, I agree that if, if we were going to put this gas tax in place, it should be, should not be raising the ad valorem taxes, and we're, we're raising both. We're raising the milleage and we're putting the gas tax. After talking to the public, hearing from the public, and reviewing this, I, I would like to make a motion that we do not proceed forward with this five cent gas tax. I believe there is some waste in the budget and that we can carve it out. I don't think this board has been operating under austerity, and when something is needed and it's asked, "Where is the money gonna come from?", members of this board say, "We'll find it, or we can find it." So I don't know where the money is being found, but it indicates to me that there is money in the budget to be cut. And we're, we're not providing more services, but we're taxing more. So that's my motion, that we not move forward with the five cent gas tax.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor.
Save it for discussion.
All right, we got a second for discussion by Commissioner Macklemore.
You know, from, reason I second this, from, from day one, you know, I don't support this. I have not supported it. I'm not saying it, it's all bad, but I don't support it, but what I would like to ask Commissioner Bryan, we're looking at roughly $120,000 now. If this don't go through, we're gonna have to find $120,000 somewhere, or we're going to have to raise the millage that much higher.
Yeah, do it. You can. It's law.
Yeah, but, okay, but we're still going, I know we can't raise it, but we're still going to, instead of cutting out that 120, we're gonna have to add it back.
It's gotta be absorbed.
We have to cut it.
You gotta find where to cut.
I understand we have to cut it.
We have to find out where to cut.
Are you gonna cut it, you gonna cut services?
Right, and that's, that's my only issue at this point in time. Now, if we had did this from, from the very start, you know, we, if we did not support this from the very start, it would've been lots easier to, to work this out, but getting it to the end of the ballgame and back out is gonna be tough. So that's my question to you right now.
And I understand that. And it will be tough, but that's our job, to take on the tough measures that have to be made. And I believe when we set that milleage, that there was room to cut back. We knew, we knew we couldn't raise it, but we know we could come down, and I believe that there's room in there to cut. And I do understand that we'd have to go back in and find that 120 or what that exact number is. I think there's a lot of room for cuts in the current budget.
Mr. Chairman, I said I wouldn't address anything, but let me just say one more time. You know, if you thought there was more room to cut, we should've done it during the time that you should've made those comments during the time that we had the budget sessions, you should've made the comments to the, to the chair of the Budget Committee and those kind of things. To do this now, I want to make one thing clear. Every time, every year that we go into budget, the state sends some other mandate down to us. They either increase retirement, you've got increasing in cost of healthcare, you have increases in cost in, in a number of different things. Things just don't stay the same. You are gonna have to have at some point, when you've cut to the bone like we did down to the 7.6, you're gonna have to at some point bite the bullet and say, "It's difficult? Do I want to raise the gas?" If I was a friend of mine out there sitting in the public, I would say, "Warren's crazy. He wants to raise five cent gas." But it's the appropriate thing to do. It's the right thing to do, because you're going to have to at some point come back. Joe Danford will tell you right now that he needs some equipment. We, we've cut all those equipment budgets. We've cut all, all kinds of expenditures. The state mandates other things. So if you wanna find another 120, then go in there and, I don't know that I can find it anymore. We've, like I said, we cut from 13.7 down to 7.6. I think we cut the vat in the budget. But at the end of the day, I'm gonna live with what this entire board votes on, and I've, I've expressed my argument. My argument stands clear. I don't mind taking the heat for the, the one to try to push it, but I, I still feel it's the right thing to do.
All right, okay. Now, Commissioner, I'll get you, but Commissioner over here has to speak.
Let's clear, clarifying something. I want to ask, ask a question. Did we not raise the milleage to go out the countywide voting?
It's in the budget.
Hold on, now, before we, did we not raise the milleage to pay a lawyer to go out the countywide voting?
Yes, we did.
There's 40,000 in the budget for that.
Okay, we, now, we raised the milleage to pay a lawyer to go out to something just, and the only thing countywide voting gonna do is continue to push our community further and further forward. That's all I see in it. But I also want to say, the EDC director, how much money was we paying him a year?
80,000.
What was it?
I think it was 60, but I'm not certain.
I mean, could somebody help me out? What were we giving the EDC a year?
80.
$80,000.
That wasn't the salary, though.
That wasn't the salary. That was 80,000, $80,000, $80,000. Okay? We gave Mr. Butler $20,000 to help head that up. Now, if I'm doing my math right, we got 60 still sitting there.
Commissioner Smiley, I believe that's in the 240.
Let him finish, please.
That is in the current.
Please, let him finish.
He asked a question.
Please, I know it, just a minute.
I'm responding. It's in the, it's in the 240. That's in the economic development budget now. That's, that 60 or 80.
Well, I'm, I'm just doing just simple math. I'm looking at this. I mean, if we was giving them 80 a year, we took 20 from 80 to give to Mr. Butler to help head that up, because now that fall up under the county. That left 60 out there somewhere. We raised the milleage. We talking about raising the milleage. We don't wanna raise the milleage. We don't, I saw it right here at the last meeting and heard Commissioner Bryan make a motion for countywide voting to raise the milleage. For countywide voting. And that money that we raising now, it's not gonna go to the Tykes Pails. It's not gonna help patch the roads. It's not gonna help with the old courthouse in Weewaw. We gonna give this money to a lawyer. So I just wanted to make that clear.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Yes, ma'am. Is that it? Now we recognize.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a couple more comments, and, you know, I go back, this, this is bad timing if you wanna put it like this or whatever. I mean, I wished we had started from day one and stayed on course with this. It would've made a lot easier, but that don't seem to be the case. So here's what we're gonna have to look at when we come back to our budget on September the 10th or whatever. We're gonna have to look at everything. What Mr. Smiley just talked about, there's $40,000 there. The sheriff over there, his two or three vehicles, that $60,000 there. We're gonna have to find that $120,000 range somewhere, so, so y'all get ready. I'll put the motions on the, on the table now. We're, we're gonna find it.
And I won't support any of them.
I'd like to respond.
All right, but now, you're recognized. Go ahead.
Yes, I did make the motion to put 40,000 from the budget towards the redistricting that we are out of compliance with and countywide voting. And the reason I did that is because the public has spoken, and that's what they want. And it's not about giving money to a lawyer.
That's the one or two that you represent.
Whoa, 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 hold up now.
It's not about giving money to a lawyer. It's about providing that every voter in this county can vote for every representative on this board. And it would, we had countywide voting, and as I've said before, three of the members of this board have run on the idea of putting countywide voting through. If we had countywide voting, we wouldn't have a lot of the financial issues that we have. Things wouldn't have to be split five ways. Things wouldn't have to be looked at as five different districts, but we could look at ourselves as one unified county and what is best for the county overall. A road needs to be paved. We don't need to pave a road in every district. We need to pave the roads that need to be paved. And I'm not saying anything that everyone in this room and the people in, in the viewing audience don't already know. That is why I made the motion to put the 40,000. It's not about paying a lawyer, as we certainly do need to have lawyers to get things done as any other county would do.
Okay. Anybody?
I just wanted to know that the one, the people that I represent, they don't want countywide voting.
And I'll second that, too. I think this vote was taken.
Backing him up here.
Yeah, I think this vote was maybe taken 10 years ago, eight, 10 years ago, whatever, throughout the whole county. I'm telling you, times change, and, and the more, I can tell you for the people in my district for sure, in the north end of the county, the more the people has gotten educated on this countywide voting, I honestly don't think it would pass today. You know, but, so, but anyway, I don't support it. I've never supported it, and that's why I say.
Okay, we got sidetracked. We're talking about gasoline. Okay? Anyway, I'll try to be liberal and fair. Got a motion on the floor. We have a second. We're still in discussion here at the board. Let me, I don't like any tax, but a sales tax is the only fair tax. I'm a property owner. I don't pay $10 a year in property taxes. I pay a lot in property taxes, and I know what it is, and I've got my trim notice the other day, and, anyway. But on gasoline, if the Queen of England comes to visit Cape Sand Blast and she pulls her Rolls Royce up to him, buys $10 a box of gas, she's gonna leave us 50 cents. If you anywhere in the world, you come here. Our gas tax now, it goes to Tallahassee. We may luckily, if we get a dime back off of a dollar. This five cents, if we send $1,000, I'm just using round numbers, we get $1,000 back. Now, it's shared with the two municipalities. I don't know. I, I spend a lot of time here in St. John, the north end, I can tell you up there, but I, go down Long Avenue, go down Reed Avenue, there's a lot of places in there. The roads are terrible. This money, if it passes, it has to be implemented. It has very rigid restrictions on it. You can't use it to go buy a pickup truck. It must be spent. We're up in the north end of the county. I was there, I was in White City this morning, looking at the new fire station there, getting ready to do. ready to do. I was in, yesterday when I left here, went back to St. Joe Beach to speak with someone there. There's not a district in this county that doesn't have some roads that need some repairs. We're patching in the north end of the county. We're patching patches with patches. You know, this money could be utilized. In the city of Weewaw, too, we do some of their patching up there. If you, we paid the whole road, but if you need to go in there and cap a place from here to there, you hire one of these, and that's what the money is used for. You hire some of these people that does parking lots. They can come in there. We can't afford to go out there. It wouldn't be feasible for us to buy the equipment and to go in the paving business. The county, it's just not feasible. We could hire people there if we need, we got little old county streets, county road here needs restriping. I'm not talking about your big ones, but a lot of them out here in the beach, White City, Jones Homestead, Weewaw Hitzka, and all. There. Now, on this, having said this, I was at, had the study in last Monday for Commissioner Jaeger, who had conflicting appointments up in Chipley. And this was an issue that came up. And 2025, our federal government says that the vehicles are going to get 54.7 miles per gallon. I don't know what kind of pedals they're going to put in the car for us to pedal or whatever. But as this mileage increase, the tax for the roads is coming down. So that's less money put on our highways. State of Oregon, and I got all this at that meeting, was the first state to implement a gas tax. Today, they have 5,000 people, they doing, utilizing a study that they're going to do away with the gas tax. You're going to pay on mileage. Drive a hundred miles, you pay so much tax. You drive a thousand miles, you pay so much tax. They're experimenting out there right now because they know that as this fuel economy goes up, and another thing, Dr. Hardman, I'm glad you brought it up. A nickel on a thousand gallons of gasoline is fifty dollars. A thousand gallons of gasoline, if your car gets 20 miles per gallon, that's 20,000 miles per year on a fifty dollars extra. You go down there talking about these elders, I see people every day, they don't mind paying six dollars or whatever for, I don't smoke for a pack of Marlboros. You know, that's no problem. A lot of things. But this would only come to, right now, the average person in the state of Florida, about $27.73 per month is in gas taxes. Now, that's federal, state, all of it. It's fifty, I think it's 54, 54 cents is what we pay in all the taxes. Now, diesel's a little higher. I think it's around 55 cents per gallon. But this is only fair tax. When people come down, they help us. But Gulf County is notorious, let's just pile it on the property owner. Let's pile it on the person because he can take care of it. That's what we want to do fine, but it, it would be a tax. If we sent a dollar up to Tallahassee, we get a dollar back. As it is now, we send a dollar up, we get a dime back. So that's upon a, no, I'm not for taxes, but a sales tax is only fair tax, only fair tax. That's all I got to say. Now, anybody else here? Anyone before we go? Uh, Mr. Attorney, would you like to...
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of comments. Just listened to the commissioners. As you, we have, today's the first public reading. You instructed to do two public hearings. Today's the reading, a public hearing, and comment. I just want to direct all your attention as you look at that, a couple of things I think are important to note for the public and the commission. Section five regarding use, the statute speaks specifically with regards to use, and I want to just recite that for the commission as well as the public, today being the public hearing, the first of two. The statute in subsection seven speaks to the purposes of the transportation expenditures are for the following. Public transportation operations and maintenance, roadway and right-of-way maintenance and equipment and structures used primarily for the storage and maintenance of such equipment, roadway and right-of-way drainage, street lighting installation, operation, maintenance, and repair, traffic signs, traffic engineering, signalization, pavement markings, installation, operation, maintenance, and repair, bridge maintenance and operation, debt service, and current expenditures for transportation capital projects. And then last, anything that's in compliance for a county less than 50,000 in population that's compliant with our comprehensive plan for transportation. I wanted to note both the use. Commissioner, I also heard you indicate the two cities, the municipalities in our county also have that. One of the purposes of the two public hearings was to obviously do the first reading today, announce it, and then on September 9th. I don't know if any of you received comment from your city commissions, obviously the second hearings for the benefit of that, compliant with statute 125 subsection 66. And the last thing I just wanted to note, in reading the actual title, the actual text of the ordinance talks about the effective date if it is passed, it needs to be by a supermajority. So you all understand it will be four commissioners that have to put this through. A majority does not put this ordinance through. And last, that it will become effective January 1st of this coming year, and it would sunset on December 31st of 2019. So it'll be a five-year period that you currently have in your ordinance. Just from the comments you'd all indicated, I just wanted to recite those for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Let me make one other comment. Our problem, our gasoline here in Gulf County, we have the same tax as Bay County, same identical tax. But I've, I've always asked this question, why is gas in Gulf County 17 to sometime possibly 25 cents per gallon more? It's due with distributors. Now, you go to Panama City, naturally, and we all go there, Walmart and that new station there on Kendall Parkway probably has the least expensive, the cheapest gas, those two. But all the outlying, now, when I come from Weewaw, Panama City back to Weewaw Hitzka, the last fueling point you have is the Star Avenue. That's the farthest out this way. I didn't have time yesterday to ride out into Mexico Beach and check those, I know the first one coming in, but anyway, what I'm getting at, there's one of the issues, why the small cannons? Now, was, like I said again, when I was in Chipley, I came back I-10, stopped in Mariana, got me a sandwich, and guess what the gas was? 317. Well, I done what you'd have done, come get some gas. Came right down the road about 12 miles or less than 15 to the little old city of Altha. 357. I mean, just 12 miles difference there in the gas. You go to Panama City, any of those outlying, those little, kind of like our express lane and, they're all probably 20 cents per gallon less than gas. Why? My question is, why does Gulf County, because it costs 17 to 25 cents more per gallon to deliver a gallon of gas or diesel into Gulf County versus Bay County? Now, there's no way that truck hauling 5,000 gallons of fuel, we use round numbers there, there's no way. How much Joe, seven, five to six? Anyway, there's no way that it cost a 20 to 25, 17, 25 cents per gallon for that truck to drive when it's right over there, right over here. So this, we're getting some price gouging out of these distributors. I know it's not the little old, I buy from, up in Weewaw Hitzka from Mr. Rich. He's in private, he's a businessman. I don't buy from the chains, I buy from the little man. Stop right in White City and buy gas from these fine people out here. But that's what we need to look at. Why is Bay County's gas, we just say, an average 20 cents per gallon cheaper than Gulf County's gas? But we need this. This tax would help us. But again, put it back on the taxpayer. Come on, I'm being used to having taxes put on me.
One more comment, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave this alone.
Sure, okay.
Uh, you know, we're talking 317 in Bay County, Georgia. It's probably 275 up there.
Yeah. Well, I was up in Atlanta, it was 309.
My point with that is, these tourists that's coming from Georgia, you know, Alabama, now, where are they going to fill up at? They're going to fill up in Georgia. They're going to fill their boat up in Georgia. They're not going to fill here anyway unless they have to, because they can go back and forth on a tank of gas, because I do it, you know? So, anyway, I'm done.
All right. Be this horse. Any more from the audience, anything on this? It's, I agree, it's, you got to look at both sides. What would be the best in the long run, you know? It would give the taxpayers a little bit of a relief here. We generate some money that the two municipalities could use, and it's restricted, as the attorney just read there. All right. Commissioner, who made the second? Who made the second, Commissioner?
I second it.
All right, you seconded.
Yes, sir.
Go back to the attorney here. This is a...
It's a public hearing, first reading. The instructions were to advertise it for two public hearings. I understand the motion that's been made in the second. I just want to remind you all again, you have two public hearings. So people that were scheduled to come today or public comment today still have the opportunity if they couldn't, or they plan to come to the second. It was advertised as such for two public hearings. You have your second public hearing on September 9th, and you have your first budget hearing on September 10th. This will ultimately be voted up or down on that date. That second public hearing is still advertised for the 9th of September.
Sure, sure, sure.
Mr. Attorney, if the motion and second that are on the floor, if it passed, wouldn't that negate the need for a second hearing? Motion was to not go forward.
Right. It would certainly negate it, absolutely. It's my recommendation that you honor the advertisement and the public hearings that you scheduled to give the public, the municipalities, everyone that had the 10-day advance notice by statute, the opportunity to comment either on the 26th or the 9th. If you all vote, you're the ultimate authority. You voted up or down. But again, you've advertised it, paid for it to be advertised twice. You have your second hearing on this ordinance, and second reading for that matter. It's not required by statute. That was the instructions a month ago when we discussed this at your budget hearing, and that's the way we've advertised it. But there's no requirement other than today.
So we need to carry the motion in any event, and if it passes, we don't need a, a second hearing?
I'm, I'm sorry, say it again.
We still need to carry the motion. There's a motion and a second on the floor, so I, and I'm asking, but my understanding is there's a motion and a second on the floor. We need to carry the motion. If it does pass, then the, the board is saying we don't need to have a second hearing because we're not going forward.
No, may I? No, we can pull the motion, second the motion, and go forward as the attorney's instructed.
Mr. Chairman, I can clear this up.
All right, please.
With the attorney's advice, I sat here, I listened to him, we paid for advertisement. With his advice, I am going to rip off my second, and we're going to listen to the public at the next meeting, and, and we'll take a vote at that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Was there any more? That's it. Motion dies for lack of a second. All right. Any more on the five cent gas tax? All right. I'm going to move into our first public hearing on the 1 percent, not cent, 1% EDC tax ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to, as to wrap up the last one for the public, September 9th, 9:00 AM will be the second hearing on the gas tax, as will this second reading of this next ordinance. They're both scheduled for two public hearings. We spoke about the legislative intent in each of the ordinances. Generally, you have ordinances that you adopt, they're required by statute to have one reading. By, by statute, anything with regards to land use, you have two public hearings. These are taxes that you're imposing on the community, and that's the, one of the legislative intents behind advertising them twice for two public hearings. If I may, I'd like to read the second ordinance by title.
By page, is it, sir?
153, sir. The, this ordinance also was advertised on August 15th, 10 days prior, consistent with statute 125 subsection 66. The ordinance reads, if I may, by title, it's an ordinance that border county commissioners of Gulf County pursuant to Florida statute 1250104 for the imposition and levy of an additional 1% tourist development tax, in parentheses, the fifth cent. Right now, you currently have four cents imposed on your TDC tax. In the existing Gulf County tourist development tax district in Gulf County, Florida, providing for the collection and designation of the additional tax, specifying for the use of the proceeds of the additional tax, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for, that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption, and that the date of the levy and imposition made hereby in the commencement of the collection of the additional tax shall be January 1st of 2015. Commissioners, just as a general comment before we turn it over to the public, as you all recall, starting back with your original TDC tax in 1998, you started with 2%. In 2002, you added an additional percent. In 2007, you added your fourth cent. And over the last year and a half, I believe, in Ms. Jenkins and the TDC, there's been discussion with regards to adding this fifth cent. At their most recent TDC meeting, it was unanimous support and recommendation for this fifth cent. There's specific uses in the actual page 155 and 156. The imposition of the tax, it would become effective on January of this coming year, and it would be carried forward for the next five years. The use of the proceeds of the additional tax is the most relevant portion of this ordinance, and it reads as follows. The proceeds of the additional tax imposed by this ordinance shall be used exclusively to promote and/or advertise tourism in the state of Florida, and/or nationally or internationally through its parks and recreation for the benefit of Gulf County, Florida. If the tax revenues are expended for an activity, service, or venue, or event, that activity, service, venue, or event shall have one of its main purposes for the attraction of tourists as evidenced by the promotion, activity, and service venue or event to the tourists. And that's compliant with statute 1250104 subsection N. Again, I indicate the TDC has recommended unanimously to endorse this, and this is the first of two public hearings with regards to this tax. I don't know if Ms. Jenkins, do you have any comments you want to offer in addition to that, or Commissioner Jaeger as liaison to the TDC? Mr. Chairman, if you can, I'll open it to public comment for commission comments.
Thank you. All right. We're open to the public. The first public hearing on this 1, 1% EDC tax ordinance. Anyone from the public? Make any comment. It says 1%. Here it's a cent. It is what it is.
1%, sir.
Yep.
And I know in speaking, Ms. Jenkins, I think some of the bed tax collectors, upon receiving the notice in the last 10 days, have inquired as to when this becomes effective. I know the TDC and the, Ms. Jenkins' office will go out and obviously educate the public, I'm assuming in the next 90 days, to advise them of the additional tax that's going to be imposed if this is passed before January 1st, when it becomes effective.
Good deal. Okay? Dr. Hardman?
Lordy, I'm going to be unpopular. I'm for this one, too. Again, allowing the tourists to take care of some of the costs that they're actually causing us. I think we're going to, coming back to you, we residents need some protection from these tourists nowadays. TDC is doing, TDC is doing too damn good a job. But I'm, I'm just curious, one, it makes sure that, that this type of tax might be used not just for promoting Gulf County, but for recreational purposes, things that we would be able to do to improve the facilities and the things that we already have, our need to, to, to be able to use it some way in that, not just for advertising. I don't want any more summer tourist.
Let me get that straight, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead. Dr. Hardman, you want to hold just a moment and freeze her time, and let me let this commission over here who is part of this, and then we're going to come back. Go ahead, Commissioner.
The intent of this penny, we put language in there that made it broad-based, but the intent of this penny is for the existing parks and recreation and to develop the park out that we have, 70 acres that was contributed to the city of Port St. Joe, so, so that our children and the children from other areas can come in and, and compete at a nice facility. So that's the, it's, it's not the intent for this penny to be used...
Totally for that.
...for advertisement, but it's the intent for that sports complex and other sports complexes.
Okay, thank you. Now, come on back. Come on, Dr. Hardman.
Okay. I'm, I don't, I'm trying to say this in a politically correct way. I don't think you ought to hang the one cent onto one park in development of something. I think you need to look at the parks throughout and other possibilities. I think that you, not just, not just the city down here, but I think you can look at the fact that a pier out at the rocks, up in Honeyville, up in Weewaw, areas where we could extend and actually improve or enhance areas that we already have, that people are already coming here for. Not, not just to build something to hope somebody's gonna come, but actually being used. Like a pier out at, out at the rocks, would get 385, 365, excuse me, 365 days a year used by locals as well as the tourists. Same thing up in the north area. So, all I'm asking is, don't tag it, I have no objection to the tourist one cent, but I think it ought to be used to enhance and improve throughout the county, not just one location. And that's my only request of you.
Miss earmark for that already. I mean, you know, she, recreation, parks, recreation, that covers, that covers everything. Recreation.
That's what I was reading right here.
Okay, so we're not, so, one is not correct, and we're going to.
It's not being dedicated to this one.
In that, in that case, I'm completely for it, and I think our constituents down at the coast where actually most of the money is raised, quite frankly, would be very proud to do this.
All right. Thank you.
Just on touching on that, you know, I personally, I would love to see a dock near the rocks.
I'm working on that.
I'm telling you, I would love that.
I'm working on that. We need one.
All right. Anyone else on the TDC? Anyone else? All right, we'll have our second public hearing, September the 9th, is that correct? 9 o'clock in the morning. Thank you. All right. It's time, we'll move into our county staff. Mrs. Roberts, do you have anything before the board today?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, dear Ms. Harry. All right. Ms. Lanier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I only have one item this morning. I received yesterday an extension for the maintenance and support agreement for the live scan equipment for our detention facility. It's an annual extension of the maintenance. I've talked to the county attorney this morning, and it's the standard contract that we extend every year, and we must have that equipment in the detention facility in order to operate for inmates. So, need the board to approve this extension for one year, from 11/1/2014 to 10/31/2015, with saffron morpho track for our live scan equipment.
Good deal. All right.
You need a motion to let, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Michael Moore for the board discussion on this. Anyone from the audience? One from the audience, not one from the audience. Other comments from board members? Any opposition? If not, motion passed, four and, all right, continue.
That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Jenkins?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm standing here today to give you an update on the EDC, the Gulf County EDC.
EDC, okay.
Yes, sir. We'll begin, this will be the first start of monthly status to you all. We had the second formal EDC meeting last week. We've set a schedule for future meetings, the third Wednesday of every month at 9 o'clock here in the county commission room. The first meeting was very educational. We updated the council on Gulf Coast Parkway, the port of Port St. Joe tourism, and just did it, the first part of the meeting was educational, and the second part of the meeting were some next steps in moving forward with implementing a website, developing a mission statement, and some goals and objectives that we'll bring to you. So, we started the process in getting the EDC back on track. Commissioner Smiley gave us a contact lead from a company that had been in talks prior with the EDA, and as he put it, he felt like he fell through the cracks, so I phoned him yesterday, and he'll be coming to meet with us in the next few weeks. So, little steps, but I just wanted to give you an update and let you know about the schedule, certainly for the public as well.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Why are you here? Let me, the board members to the public, I had the opportunity to sit in on the meeting. I think it was a very productive meeting, and good points coming up. What I saw, and it was the fact that you're meeting in a little cramped room there, and you're gonna have people that come in, it's a sunshine meeting, and the members were having to turn, and we were really cramped there, and I, as the chairman of the board, offered the Gulf County EDC, the use of this building for one reason, two parts of this, it's more set up for meeting. And as this EDC grows, there'll be more people coming. And secondly, we have video, and that eliminates a lot of the he said, she said. So, you can go back if you need to touch on something, or go back and look at it, you have that. And I granted you that, because we wouldn't have another meeting, you wouldn't have another meeting before we had this one. So, what I'd like to do, I'd like board approval on this. I'd like the board to approve this. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other discussion on this? Anything from the public? Is there any opposition to this motion? No opposition, the motion passed, four and oh. Jenkins, and with the EDC, you can utilize this room.
Thank you. We will duly post all the upcoming meetings appropriately.
Sure. Thank you. Larry.
That's right.
Good deal. Go.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait your turn. (laughing).
Yeah.
I have Amendment Number Two for the small county grant. I need the chairman's signature on it. We had to make some changes in the, in the options on our small piece of equipment that we're getting, and we had to throw some things out, add some things. Hence, the grant is gonna cover all but $1,275 and change. We're gonna have to pay that out of county funds.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Michael Moore. Special known. Mr. Danfries, anything from the audience? From the audience? No, is there any opposition? Motion passed, four and oh.
Second item, we made an agreement a while back with Gulf Coast Electric to let them use part of our Weetapo property for a lay-down yard. They have somebody coming in that's gonna chip all their stuff, just chip it and take it away. And it works great for them. I think it worked great for us, too. We're not gonna get that tub grinder running anytime soon. It's expensive, the mill itself is probably gonna be $16,000. And we need to do something with the debris we have. So, I'd like the board's permission to go ahead and talk to their guy, Gulf Coast Electric's guy, and see if he'd be willing to do it. I think he would.
All right, now, let me ask this. I think when we were negotiating with Gulf Coast Electric, now, what you, are you, let me clarify this. They will bring the tub grinder to us, we won't carry our debris to them. Now, I know we can use that yard now, that was part of the agreement, my understanding, if we had our limb trucks up in the north end of the county, instead of driving them all the way here, they could use that lay-down, and they would dispose of all of our debris. But you're saying, you wanna see if they can bring it down to the five-point site?
Well, I want it to be all-inclusive. I don't want just say the five-point site. We have debris at the Weetapo site, too. Gulf Coast Electric has one part, we have, we have two separate permits, okay? And we have a permit down here where we keep it. So, wherever we are permitted to have a lay-down yard, then I would like to have the ability to negotiate with this guy to come in and do it, and whatever the attorney needs for him to sign and seal, then.
All right, let us, you'll let us look at this a little bit. I'd have to go back and read the agreement with Gulf Coast, 'cause I carried it back and forth.
Has nothing to do with Gulf Coast.
You're talking about where this individual is gonna come in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Have Joe work with the county attorney.
Got a motion, got a second here. Any further discussion on the board? Anyone from the audience?
No one from the audience, any opposition? If not, motion passed, four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to note and emphasize, Joe had indicated, there's no cost to the county. So, this is the chipper that comes on to the co-op site, or the county site where the co-op's licensed to use right now, a layoff yard, and they're gonna extend those chipping services for the county, will give them the permission to be on-site exclusively for the chipping of the county's yield on limb debris, but we're just gonna give them permission with proper insurance.
Can you get that done? That'd be a big plus for us, yeah. Okay, anything else, Joe? All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Nelson?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Mr. Cothran? All right, we'll go back over here. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, I presented a progress report for your review, and today I'm seeking your approval of it. I don't believe there was any changes made, so the board's acceptance of the progress report, and it does require the chairman's signature, and the clerk has two copies for you to sign.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. All right, motion by Commissioner Michael Moore. A second, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any further discussion on this? Anyone in the audience, any input from the audience? No opposition, motion passed, four and oh. Get with me, wouldn't you?
Okay, this will also be sent a copy to the star. I'll be sent a PDF to them by email, so they can use it as they are, and it'll be available to the public. This is part of our CRS program, recertification, we have to go through this every year. Also, I'm seeking the boards to authorize the board, um, excuse me, the chairman to sign the AW form, once I get it completed, so I don't have to come back before the board. And all this is verification that all the points that we have to verify every year is being done. It's kind of time since, is the reason I'm asking for this. And I have to add in by October 1st, so we revert from a 8 back to a 10, so, just making sure.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I got a motion. Second, Mr. Chairman. Is it October the 1st?
That's the deadline, yes, sir.
Thank you. Second.
Okay, excuse me.
Okay, any further discussion here? Anyone from the audience on this? No opposition, motion passed, four and oh. All right.
Chairman, also, y'all have a copy of the RPL letter that has, go out to repair the lost areas. This is just for your information. It's a very extensive letter this year. We're going through map remodelingization coming up, and also with all the flood insurance changes, so I threw in a lot of data for the public to maybe assist them in making them aware of all that's going on, this for informational purposes. And the last item, Mr. Chairman, is from the Water Management District. They're working as a contractor with FEMA. The county is coming up for a map modernization again. We're going to risk manage, risk maps. You have before you a, they're seeking a memorandum of understanding. It's supposed to be non-binding. I will let the attorney take time to read over it, but with the board, county approval to go, excuse me, county attorney's approval for the chairman to sign it, and so we can move on. And fortunately, this is, it's just more like a paperwork thing, we're gonna have to do it anyway. FEMA's gonna change those maps, and it just involves us, and we participate, so, just asking for the board to allow the chairman to sign a MOU.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, there's one for the water shed, and one for the Apalachicola water shed.
Sure, yes. All right.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll vote on it, and it'll keep it all in order.
Let me say in discussion, David, with this, all these FEMA maps and all this, see, there's a couple different things. Number one, the National Association of Counties is working on some of the problems that FEMA has with these remaps. For the public that doesn't know, when they remap, it can affect you greatly. It can, it can put you in, in a flood plain that you were never in before, and require you to have flood insurance if you have a mortgage. So, it's very important to stay up to date. National Association of Counties is working on it, the Florida Association of Counties is working extensively on it, and so is there, there's a rural caucus, I say rural caucus, there's a Gulf Coast Caucus within the National Association of Counties of the five states, Texas to Florida, and they're working extensively on it, because that, it affects most of those states. It's important to note that everybody thinks Florida's the big loss of the program. Florida has contributed $16 billion into that program over the last number of years, since it started in late 80s, or whenever it was, I think it was late 80s. We've only received $4 billion. Florida's not the problem, it's other areas that are the problem, and we're a donor state, just like we are with our gas taxes and everything else. We put more to the federal government than we get back. And so, Florida's not the problem. I'd almost wish that Florida would establish a program, and that way they could generate some revenue. But, at the end of the day, it's important to pay attention to this, because it's a direct cost to you, the taxpayer, with these remapping.
Yes, sir, I'm not very popular with FEMA, 'cause I tell them it's criminal what you people are doing. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion. Second over here, any further discussion on these two, is there's anything from the audience? No opposition, motion passed, four and oh. David, when you get it, attorney's reviewed it, I'll call me, and I'll take care of it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is that all?
That's all, sir.
All right. Ms. Thomas?
Yes, sir, I have two things today. First thing, we received an email from DOT stating that the board needed to adopt Title Six, non-discrimination, for our LAP projects, and I gave you all a copy of that today. Yes, sir. It's the Title Six. And I just need a motion to adopt that policy to go in our.
Well, you need a motion to adopt this policy.
Yes, sir. It's already been reviewed by Mr. Novak.
Okay.
It's for our LAP grants.
Got a motion by Commissioner Michael Moore, second by Commissioner Bryan. Any further board discussion? Anything from the audience on this? Anyone from the audience? No opposition, motion passed, four and oh.
Okay, I have one more thing. It's our grant agreement and resolution for the David Langston sidewalk project. I need approval for that. It's our LAP agreement and resolution.
So moved, Chairman. Second. Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any further board discussion? One from the audience on this, David Langston. Motion passed, four and oh.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is with regards to an update on your Port Authority loan agreement. Last week, we had the chairman of the Port Authority and Mr. Gibson receive our package, which included a note, a mortgage, a loan agreement addendum, an opinion letter from Mr. Gibson, as well as a waiver of legal contest, and permissibility of the encumbrance of the Arizona Chemical Site. That was all provided to them, that's all been executed, it's been provided to the clerk's office, it's been properly recorded, and since that time, they have received their initial distribution per your authorization at your last meeting. I just wanted to thank the clerk's staff and the administrator's office for assisting us in getting that facilitated and out. They received the funds last Thursday afternoon.
Thank you.
The second item is with regards to your habitat conservation plan. Your consultant has issued their initial invitation letters for the steering committee. At your last meeting, you all ratified your final steering committee list. They've since sent out those invitations, and I believe that they're setting up for their first meeting and invitations into EOC for September. So, the people on that list at your last meeting can anticipate, if they haven't received correspondence already from Cardinal Entrix, to receive that when they're gonna start getting that process going in September, so, and we'll put public notices out for those meetings as well. The next item I have is the Restore Act. I know Commissioner Jaeger, you're gonna be addressing that. The next item is the Gulf County Healthcare Trust Board. Just to update and report you all, at your last meeting, we had indicated we had a very positive meeting with Mr. Hall from Sacred Heart Hospital. Since that time, in that meeting, we requested the health trust board for the county, a half-cent sales tax, call a special meeting, which they're doing this Thursday, they announced it about two weeks ago at the hospital. We'll be going on behalf of the county, Sacred Heart will be in attendance as well, and we'll be meeting with your community health trust board for the purposes of that half-cent sales tax, to review your memorandum of understanding and the commitment of that half-cent, not only to the underinsured and uninsured on an annual basis. Right now, you pledge $460,000 a year to Sacred Heart, and the projected revenue shows some surplus, and that was a discussion during your budget review meetings, and we now have a, an understanding with Sacred Heart as to going towards the health trust board, asking them for a resolution, supporting the county's request of pulling that surplus half-cent sales tax, and putting it towards your EMS for underinsured and uninsured. That's this Thursday, and we'll come back to you all with, hopefully, a resolution adopted by that, by your health trust. The next item along those lines, in pages two through six of your information packet, at your last meeting, we had just received correspondence from the Healthcare Administration, ACHA, with regards to a renewed LIP grant match request of $268,000. I had read it initially, Ms. Lynn had received it that morning or the evening before your last meeting. We included it in your information packet this time, so the public and you all would have an opportunity. This ties directly into your half-cent sales tax. As I indicated at your last meeting, you've pledged over $70,000. As I indicated at your last meeting, you've pledged over $700,000 in grant matches over the last three or four years. That has eaten into your surplus on this half-cent sales tax. Right now, the request for this year is for $268,000. Um, as we've discussed, we're going to the health trust board to discuss with them that $140,000 surplus. Uh, there's not 268 there right now, but what we will need from the commission is an indication what, how we are to respond to ACHA moving forward on this request. So if I can ask.
I know these grant funds are, are, are important, uh, in, in supporting to get the match, but we can't do it. Not if, not if we're going to, uh, the way I understand it, not if we're going to go and, and try to get some of these funds to support the, uh, low-income and the people that can't pay the EAS that's going to go, you know, I, I think we need to continue to go on the path that we're going. So, uh, uh, we have matched them before, but I, I don't see any way that we can do it.
Your projected revenue doesn't even show $268,000. Um, you've eaten into that. So, um, one, there's not sufficient funds, and two, you've instructed, obviously, staff to move in a different direction with regards to those surplus. Um, we'll continue to move in that direction, but we can have something to give back to ACHA just from the commission indicating a response to that request.
So move to give a response from the attorney that, that the, the funds aren't there and, and there's no way that we can provide the match, uh, this year.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager.
Second, Mr.?
Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore. Any further board discussion? Anyone from the audience on this? Uh, this motion passes. Take care of that.
I will, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the next item I have is an update. Um, it was reported recently, and we didn't receive correspondence until actually it was reported, um, on the news, uh, but the most recent, um, ethics complaints filed against, uh, the commissioners were dismissed at effect of July 30th, um, for legal insufficiency. Um, if the ethics complaints filed against the three commissioners were with regards to your April 8th meeting, uh, challenging the vote that was taken on the conditional variance with regards to Beacon Hill Park, um, the commission met on Friday, July 25th, and found that the complaints were legally insufficient, and that if there is a form to challenge the decision of the commission, it was properly placed with the courts, and they dismissed all three of them. Um, I just wanted to report to you and to the public that those were dismissed, um, uh, on July 30th. To that point as well, uh, update on your litigation with regards to the variance, um, the lawsuit that was filed challenging the county's, uh, approval of those conditional variances, or conditional variance in Beacon Hill, uh, adjacent to Beacon Hill Park. Uh, most recently, the judge stayed all discovery pending a hearing in October on the writ for petition of certiorari. Uh, there's been several motions filed since the complaint has been filed. Um, most recently, the plaintiff has filed a motion for leave to amend the complaint for a second time. Um, that motion is pending before the court right now. Uh, essentially, what they're doing is asking to add additional counts to the complaint, and that is pending before the judge right now. Um, in addition to that, there's been a motion for reconsideration of the judge's order, uh, staying all discovery that was recently filed, um, and we've responded to that as well. And then last, uh, as I indicated, a hearing has actually been set, so hopefully the judge can give us some direction and, uh, some disposition on the actual merits of the complaint, and the hearing has been set for October. Uh, but as it stands right now, I know there was some comment at a previous meeting with regards to the commission not participating or offering comment. I had filed a motion to, uh, protective orders of the commission, because necessary, discovery was unnecessary at the time. The, uh, court has a sufficient record to review the hearing, both public hearings, um, and the judge has since issued an order staying all discovery, agreeing with that position. Um, and right now, there is no discovery ongoing in the case. Um, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir. Thank you. I have nothing. Chair? Okay. Let's go. This way, that whistle.
It don't really matter. I just have one little issue, and I want to address Ms. Bryan with this. Have you seen this email concerning the ball field at Beacon Hill?
Yes, and I did respond, didn't copy you because of sunshine, but yes, I did respond and copied, um, staff and Mr. Butler, and those should be, that should be ready by the 15th.
Okay, so you're going to go ahead with the project then and open it up and all?
It was already on the work crew's, um, schedule there to get it done. There's a lot of things going on in that park, and that's part of it.
Okay.
And I think we should be able to have it done by then.
A couple of things, Mr. Chairman, if you can bear with me. Uh, first thing I want, the, uh, Port Association of Counties always does a, a calendar, and they take, uh, pictures in response to, uh, the different counties and put them on the calendar, and what they've asked is, is for sunrise or sunset pictures from, from the different communities. I'd like to open that up. We, we have several photographers in our community that take great sunset pictures and all that kind of good thing. So i- if the boards will allow, can we, have we got that on the website yet, Lynn?
Um, I do not know. Uh, Dennis was on vacation last week, and we had several issues that couldn't come back, but I'll make sure he gets on.
Let's get that on the website. I'd love to see Gulf County featured in, in that calendar. At, at any rate, uh, we'll move forward with that. Uh, want to give you just a, uh, an update the best I can on the Restore. Uh, I know it's been a long time coming, but Treasury has finally, uh, got the rules out. There's a 30-day, and, and I'll let the county attorney, uh, expand on this a little bit. There's a 30-day response time, but basically, the last response time, when Gulf County and, and many of the other counties, uh, gave to, to the consortium our comments, uh, the, the, actually, the Treasury listened to those comments. Out of the 12 things that we mentioned, they, they, they took 11 of them and incorporated them in the rules. So basically, what it says now, there's a couple of different things. Let me mention a couple of different, just, just for your information. Uh, the formulas that the consortium had adopted that for, for how the money is distributed through the counties was, was approved and adopted. What this means for Gulf County, and understanding that the BP trial is still ongoing and, and will resume in January. So the monies that are there come from the transocean settlement, and that was, I think, a billion dollars, and 200 million went into the Treasury, uh, for the, for the Clean Water Act, and the other, uh, bit of money goes into the Restore Act and distributed through the Restore Act. So of that particular fine money, coming to Gulf County will be about $2.2 million. And, and that will be, it's actually already there, available June the 30th, but we, we don't have, we, we haven't finished the rules with the Treasury because of the comment period. So probably in the next 30 days, and, and the county attorney can probably give you a better date, because I'm going on estimates, uh, we'll be able to actually apply for monies that we can expend to help us do a, a, a strategy on how we're going to spend the money. Uh, they call it an implementation plan. Uh, and, and so at some point in the near future, we'll probably, at the end of the, uh, it's, it's almost overwhelming for me to, to, to take all this in and, and do the, the, um, webinars and do the conference calls and all this. At some point, uh, there's 3% that you can use in administration money that we can reimburse our administration that's, that's doing the work, but at some point, we'll have to probably get somebody on board. Uh, uh, many of the counties, larger counties especially, have already hired somebody, uh, but at some point, we'll have to come back to the board and say, look, uh, you know, our first application is going to be for that admin money, so we can get somebody on board to, to actually run this through, uh, get our implementation plan done, and start doing, uh, projects that, that our, our committee recommends and, and approves. So, uh, just for you to know, uh, the, the federal government's already audited us. They did, before they give us the money, they audited us to make sure we had protections in place with the clerk's office and that type thing on how the money's spent, uh, and, and everything's good there. So, uh, I guess the, the only other thing, let me, let me mention that, that, uh, I know that there was, a lot of people that thought no money would ever come, but this is an opportunity for us to do some things. We've got several different organizations that are trying to recommend projects to us, so it's a great organization. The Nature Conservancy is doing, uh, watershed meetings that, that I've, I've attended. Mr. Butler's attended. I think Mr. Novak has attended some of those. And so there's going to be a lot of projects that can benefit Gulf County for the long haul. We need to make sure, two things. Number one, that if, if there's any opportunity for us to match, uh, use this money for match for other grants so we can get more monies, we need to do that. And we need to make sure, uh, that our grandchildren, 50 years from now, can, can look back on this and say, you know what? We did some great projects with this Restore money. Um, there'll be more money that's coming in once the BP settlement's over, and it could be 10 times more money. I mean, the, the estimated, uh, estimated fines could be as much as 20 billion, but estimates say that it'll be from 10 to 15 billion dollars. That'll be 10 to 15 times more money than the 2.2 million. So there'll be a lot of money to do some good projects that will benefit Gulf County and the state of Florida for years to come. So I'll, I'll, I'll keep briefing you, and, and let me defer to the county attorney to, uh, add anything else that I've, that I've left off. I'm sure there's much that I've left off, but, uh, we'll be having a couple of conference calls. I think I've got two this week, uh, with different organizations on, on the Restore, so.
All right, let's go over here.
Commissioner, I think, I think you covered the majority of it. Um, as you indicated, it's about a year, two months shy of a year. Um, so the process took a bit longer for the Treasury, but the very good news is that the 23 counties that did provide commentary and sent it up through the FAC and the consortium, as you indicate, 11 of the 12 comments, um, were incorporated into the final rule. The, uh, final comments on this proposed final rule are due September 15th, and then the Treasury will adopt that rule on October 15th. So in the next month and a half, this final rule will be in place. That transocean money is already in the Treasury, and they'll begin receiving applications, um, as of October 16th. Some of the, the highlights of what they incorporated was, they actually heard the voice of the smaller counties in, in Florida. Um, as you know, Texas, Alabama, and Mississippi are going to be on a state level. Louisiana has the parishes, and, and Florida has the counties with regards to POP 1 or the direct funding. Um, so the, the small counties in Florida were heard, um, most, most notably with regards to the multi-year implementation. There's a plan that needs to be in place for every county to submit to the Treasury, um, and that app needs to be incorporated into the application. What they did is they provided a vehicle, um, for the multi-year planning for the smaller counties to submit applications to receive advanced funding so we can begin, begin to, uh, add the appropriate personnel and professionals and staff that the larger counties already have the budgeting to do. Um, so sections four through eight of the actual initial multi-year implementation are not required of the smaller counties. We can submit an application on October 16th on behalf of Gulf County and pursue, and pursue that funding. Once we bring that, uh, professional, uh, staff in, then we can then begin to start with the second phase of the, uh, multi-year implementation. Um, some of the other notes in the, uh, final rule that they've incorporated, when the 23 counties in the consortium sent up to the Treasury, as I indicated, it took a bit longer than we all had hoped for, but they actually took and, and heard all the, I think it was over 1,300 comments that they had received. But they did, uh, offer to the counties that the plans that we put in place are going to be phased, they'll be incremental, um, and they can be amended throughout time as well. And that's important, obviously, for smaller counties in Florida. Um, as I indicated, the states west of us are going to receive the funding. Direct funding comes directly to Gulf County with the pre-audit requirements you indicated. The applications go in, but as the projects evolve, as the county grows, we can amend these plans, we can put them in incremental stages. Um, we just need to show that projection over the coming years of how we're going to go about doing that. Um, in 2012, the Treasury actually went through a public rule process on the OMBs. Um, what they've found through the Restore Act is there's no reason to come up with a different Office of Management and Budgeting. The OMBs that are there for federal grants and auditing are going to apply to our Restore Act as well. So as when we, hopefully, you all instruct our Restore Act to get back together, um, we'll have that in place. It'll, won't be any different than any of your other federal grants that you all apply for with those OMB regulations. The County Attorneys Association is going to be offering comments again. Our deadline is in the next two weeks. Um, working towards that September 15th deadline. I know you, Commissioner, you indicated you have conference calls coming up. I think there's a couple, uh, meetings coming up as well, um, not only for the Gulf Coast Restoration Council, but also for the consortium here in Florida. Um, for the folks in the public, um, the various pots are now, the formulas are, are clarified. Um, as you indicated, the transocean money is there, but we don't know ultimately what the BP money is going to be until we start getting that trial going in January and what formula and fines are going to impose. For the folks in the community with regards to different pots, I just wanted to, uh, the website, it's restorthegulf.gov. For the folks that want to look at the actual second pot, which is the comprehensive, uh, funding, that's the Gulf Restoration Council. Um, and then obviously, when we hopefully start the Restore Committee back up, we'll have that staff on hand to assist us in, in complying with the, uh, actual application. Um, they've broken the acronym down to TIFR, so it's no longer a Treasury interim rule. Um, they've now given this one an acronym as well, along with the Restore. Um, and ideally, in the next two weeks, when we come back on September 9th, this is going to, I believe the process is going to happen rather quickly now, and we'll have much more updating information for all you commissioners as well as the public.
Let me also mention, basically what we've talked about here is the county's direct pot. That's pot number one, but that's the money that's coming directly to the counties, that we make the decision locally on, on what projects we want to do. The consortium, which we are a member of, the 23 counties, also has a pot, and it's a fairly large pot. So we'll be, there'll, there'll be some projects that will go to Northwest Florida and the Gulf, in Gulf County region on that money. So inevitably, you're not just going to be getting your direct pot, you're going to be, you're going to be having the opportunity, and I, I'm a, our representative on that consortium, we'll be having the opportunity to have input on projects from that particular pot that needs to come to Gulf County. So it's, uh, it's, uh, it's an opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This will be going on for 10 years, so it, it's something that, uh, long after I'm gone, Gulf County will still be doing projects on, on, on this Restore money. So, uh, I, I want to say that it was, uh, a, a great effort by, by especially the eight disproportionately affected counties in getting this passed in the first place. There was a lot of skepticism whether this money would ever come. Well, it's here, and it's starting, starting the process. So I'm, I'm proud that we've got this far, and, uh, it'll be a great opportunity for Gulf County.
You mentioned skepticism, Commissioner, and I just want to talk about the formula if I can. The Florida, different than the other four states, the consortium that you sit on, um, came up with, there's just 23 affected counties and eight disproportionately. The, the consortium came up with a formula, and it went back and forth and was discussed and debated over many, many months, um, but ultimately, the, the Treasury adopted Florida's, uh, formulas, which are very favorable to Gulf County, and the small counties, uh, the disproportionate counties were favorably represented in that final formula, um, and they accepted it in its entirety. So it's going to obviously bode well when the, uh, transocean and the BP funds come to Gulf.
And if anybody's interested in reading all this stuff, you can go to Treasury, uh, www.treasury.gov, and, uh, there's a, there's a link that ties into Restore Act, and you can read all that's, that's come down on, on the rules and the pots of money and the mounts and that type of thing.
Yeah. Let me make a comment here, just for the public and the ones watching on television. A lot of this took place right over in the EOC building. Gulf County jumped out, took point on it. We had counties from South Florida coming up that hadn't even got, gotten started. They want to come up and look at what Gulf County was doing. And, uh, Commissioner Yeager, you really be commended along with our administrator, our attorney, and all those that were sitting there. We had some good, open minds there. We sat down, we reviewed this stuff. We met, what, once a week for, gosh, I don't know how long. But anyway, Gulf County played, played a major role in this.
And, uh, 11 out of 12, the United States government or the legislature?
Well, that, that, that's, that's good for us.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Bryan, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I want to, uh, talk a little bit about our volunteer fire department. Um, I know a lot of, we have a lot of new folks in, at least in my district, and I don't know that everyone in the public realizes that our fire departments are volunteer fire departments. And some of the folks that are involved have expressed that it's difficult to get volunteers, and they're always looking for people who want to participate. Um, Ms. Lanier, do you know if there's anything on our website that can be referred to for the, how to go about volunteering with the fire departments?
Don't know particularly. I can look at that and see.
Okay, I'll try to follow up with you. I know I hadn't talked to you about this before. This is something that's just recently come up, but if we could maybe put some type of direction on our, on our website regarding what path one would take if they want to get involved with the.
We can certainly do that, Commissioner. Each of our fire departments has a president and a chief and they usually, for the public's information, anyone wanting to volunteer will go to a meeting and then they will follow up with our staff in order to get the proper screening done and the applications and such. So I wasn't aware that we needed anything like that, but I can certainly make sure it's put on the website.
Yeah, that, and this is the first time that I've brought this up. It's just something that this week I had met with a couple of folks and they had expressed to me that the departments are always looking for volunteers. And I do think there's a lot of folks in our community that just don't realize that there is a need or that, that the fire departments are volunteers. So I will, I'll follow up on that and we'll try to get some information up on the website just to direct anyone who's interested in participating and they do a great job and I'd like to support that. Thank you.
Anything? And the chair? I don't have anything today, but this time, we will go to public for any public discussion. Anyone in the public have anything before the board today? If you do, I wouldn't be recognized. What from the public? What, what from the public? Which adjourned, I hear, second? Second, here, that's it. Thank you.
That's right.